Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 24th, 2022 meeting of the City of Gloucester zoning board of appeals. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting, meaning we're meeting in person, but we also have a remote capability on Zoom. People are able to log in and participate on Zoom. For the record, the Zoom ID for this meeting is 818-7986-8687. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Catherine Schlichty, Peter Canavo, and online Michael Nyman, and I declare we have a quorum of four. We have a couple of things that are not gonna be heard tonight that are on the agenda due to different reasons. Two are the new applications. The first one, 85 Bass Avenue, is, was not, shouldn't be on our agenda. It looks like an issue that's gonna have to go before the city council. We wouldn't have jurisdiction in a commercial property to allow that. And the other one is the 169A East Main Street. That has to be continued because we don't have enough voting members to hear that. So with that in mind, I would have a motion to continue 169A East Main to November 14th.
Make a motion to continue 169 East Main Street to November 14th.
Second. Aiden, seconded to continue, roll call.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. So that's continued. The, and we're removing 85 Bass Ave. from the agenda. Next order of business is the approval of decisions that have been written up to this point for the chair to sign. It's a consent agenda for 248 Atlantic Road, 2 High Rock Terrace, 8 Coggle Shell Road, and 10 Rocky pasture road. We'll have one motion to approve those unless any member wishes to pull one for review.
I move approval of the four decisions for the chair to sign on behalf of the zoning board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Next order of business, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes before us for September 12th, 2024, and September 26th, 2024. They were posted and everyone has those. Are there any corrections or omissions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a correction to the September 12th minutes. On the, one, two, on page two, no, on page three for the 44 Leonard Street, on the motion, it just says, a motion, she removed modification of the front and side yard variances and for a new variance and lot coverage. It should say for a new variance for lot coverage. And then on page four, for 70 and 70 rear Harrison Avenue, second paragraph, second sentence, it says a special impairment to alter expansion. It should say special permit, alter expansion.
Okay, want to take a motion with those changes? For those two sets of minutes?
Okay. Yeah, I can do that. I'd move approval of minutes of 912, 2024, and 926, 2024, with the two amendments introduced by Catherine Schlichty.
Okay. Aiden, seconded, roll call.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, on both.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Well, we have continued applications, the first being the petition. 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking variances, laudarian, laudary per dwelling, and requirements to construct a single-family home at 105 Winger Sheek Road, attorney Favazza's.
Thank you. Let me bring my presentation up. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I am an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street in Gloucester. I was before you, a month or so ago, over at the Rose Baker Senior Center, and this had been continued twice. The city staff had asked that the floodplain lines be confirmed. And as again, we are still in conservation commission permitting, and they're not ready to pull a building permit. We are happy to oblige the request. And it's my understanding that there's a tentative green light, and if relief is granted tonight, I would suggest you just condition it on getting written, written confirmation from Chuck Shade that the floodplain lines have been delineated correctly. So the only other piece of housekeeping, I just want to really quickly back to the plans. So these houses are shown as the green highlights. The red area is velocity zone floodplain. The purple area is rising water floodplain. And you have wetland buffers toward the road. And so you can see, these properties, again, you granted the exact relief we're requesting previously. And then we had to, when the ordinance changed for this floodplain ordinance section to be incorporated, we had to then move everything around again and are back to, once again, seek the relief. The only other thing I want to bring up, you have dated sometime September, a letter from an attorney representing one of the neighbors who questioned whether or not you have the legal authority to grant the requested variances. And I just want to touch upon that really quickly. So there is some established case law in Massachusetts that says, you know, when a lot is genuinely physically too small, especially if it's been, you know, made that way by decisions made by the property owner, that you can't grant a lot area variance to solve that problem. It happens with merger a lot. You have two 8,000 square foot lots in a 10,000 square foot district. They merge into one 16,000 square foot lot. And as much as you'd like to be able to break them back out into eights, you can't grant that 2,000 square foot lot area because the lots are physically too small. But none of those cases discuss the situation we have here, which is that these lots are actually physically twice the minimum. And what we're actually taking an exception to is a local definition regarding, that's in section 3.1.8, which just defines lot area. It has a maximum in there as to how much of your lot area can be calculated using wetland resource areas. And again, we're out in Winger Sheek, so the entirety of this property is considered a wetland resource area. And so the definition in 3.1.8 creates a problem in that, yeah, there's obviously, again, twice as much land area as is necessary for a single-family home out there, for a standalone lot out there. But this definition that we've inserted tries to disqualify all but 5,000 square feet of the land out there. And so I think you're within your rights to grant the variances for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit that you granted previously. However, if you want to belt and suspender it, I would also request that you grant a variance from the resource area maximum in section 3.1.8. Because again, these lots aren't actually too small. They're double size. It's just this definition in 3.1.8. And so if there's any hesitation on the board about granting a lot area variance, again, I believe you have the authority to do so. You could grant a variance also from resource area maximum in that definition. In either case, as I discussed when I first presented it, the request of this variance is driven directly by hardship relating to the topography and soil conditions. Again, this is a wetland resource area identified as dune by DEP and the Concom. And it is, it is unique to this property. Again, Winger Sheek Road is a small portion of the zoning district, and the majority of the zoning district is not made of dune. So there is a unique topographical soil condition hardship for this property that is not common throughout the zoning district in which it's located. Granting the relief doesn't harm the public good because, again, you're just allowing two single-family homes in a developed residential neighborhood on double-sized lots to be created. And I meant to look this up, and I'm sorry I didn't. I feel like last time, when you granted the relief, we may have restricted it to single-family use only on the two lots. And that would be fine as a condition also, if there was any concern about that. So again, I'm asking for a minimum lot area variance of 15,000 square feet, a minimum lot area per dwelling unit of 5,000 square feet on each lot. And again, just to be safe, I think we could get a variance from the resource area maximum in section 3.1.8, just to make sure we've covered our bases. Any questions, I'm happy to go through that, but you should be fairly familiar with the site on this go-around.
Would the variance for the resource area kind of clash against the new wetland FEMA stuff?
No, so the, the new floodplain ordinance speaks about construction within a FEMA flood zone. And you could have, you know, non-resource area. You can have a parking lot that is in a floodplain, and that new ordinance controls what you can do in that parking lot that happens to be in a floodplain. What the lot area definition does is speaks about wetland resource areas. And so you could very much be out of a floodplain but have a wetland resource area, and the definition would then discount that toward your total count.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board? Okay, we, we had left the public hearing open, so we'll allow testimony again on this application. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. If you're in the hall, if you're on Zoom, you can participate by hitting your raise hand button. If you're on a cell phone, you dial star nine. And we'll be looking out for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? I see Marshall, you can come up if you're in the audience. And then we'll recognize the online in a moment. Now, you got to come up to the mic and remind everyone, we need your name and address first. Give us a second to record that, and then you can tell us your thoughts. You have to speak into the mic or it won't, it's not on.
Hi, I'm Steve Archer, and I own the property at 103 Winger Sheek. And I'm curious, these are obviously, by looking at the plans, very large homes. And it was represented that these are in keeping with the neighborhood. I'd be curious as to actually how many square feet these houses are, because I think they're about five times larger than our house. And they're just gonna dwarf us. I don't think it's consistent, maybe with part of the neighborhood, but certainly not with the direct of butter. And because we're a pre-existing non-conforming situation, because it's been built so many years ago, we're very close to the property line. And this house is gonna be just over 20 feet from our house, and it's gonna be just looming over us. I just think they're too big for the lot. And I'd be curious as to how big a house they could build if they weren't seeking variances. Basically what I'd like to know, if that's...
It'll be addressed in rebuttal.
How big is your house, Mr. Archer?
Excuse me?
How many square feet is your house?
I think it's about 1,200 feet. And if you added Kinsey's house, which is your butter on the other side, it's, add them both together, they're less than half the size of one of these houses. So it's not really in keeping with all the neighborhood, certainly the direct of butters.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? If not, we have Marshall Handley on with a hand raised.
Good evening.
Right.
I, I represent Frank and Sue Kinsey, who are direct of butters to this project. I sent you a letter, and I stand by what I said in the letter. I think the statute...
We need, we need your name and address.
I'm sorry, Marshall Handley, firm of Handley and Cox, 9 Abbott Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. I represent Frank and Sue Kinsey of 111R Winger Sheek Road, the direct of butters to 107 Winger Sheek.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I think that the statute and the case law are very clear that with the doctrine of merger, if you, if, if an applicant owns two lots, two budding lots that are non-conforming, the doctrine of merger applies to require that the two lots be combined to reduce the non-conformity. And what we're doing here is we're taking a non-conforming lot, and we're dividing it and increasing the non-conformity, which I think is, is directly abhorrent to the statute. The, you know, Mr. Favazza speaks to, to, to your authority. The city council in Gloucester, I believe, is the legislative body, and they have seen fit to promulgate bylaws or ordinances that, that define how lots are measured. And under the measurement of, of lot area, these lots are non-conforming. It is, I do not believe that it is within the authority of this board to ignore the, the legislation, the legislative definition of lot area that has been promulgated by the, by the, the city council and the, you know, the legislative body. And I would suggest to you that it is, that is, it is in excess of your authority to grant variances for, for a lot area where the, the non-conformity can be reduced by simply applying the requirements of chapter 48, section 6, and the doctrine of merger, combining these two lots and making a single more conforming lot. The, the, the suggestion that the, the characteristics of this lot are unique to the lot is, is really quite absurd. The, the characteristics of this lot are shared by all of the lots up and down Winger Sheek Road. And it is, it is common, if not absolutely identical, to the, to the rest of the zoning district. And on that basis, I would suggest that a, that a grant of a variance on the basis of insufficient lot area is in excess of the authority of this board.
So, Mr. Handy?
Handley.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Handley. So you're saying that even though each of these lots are physically 45,000 square feet, that the, and the lot size out there is 20,000 square feet, that the doctor of merger, doctrine of merger would apply based on Gloucester's particular...
Definition of lot.
Definition of lot area.
Yes, I would. And, and I would also point out that I believe that the description of these lots, since I have been examining this application, has changed, and they have gone from a high-water boundary to a mean-low water boundary inexplicably. The heretofore, to, in my, to my knowledge, the only lot that was measured to mean-low water was the Kinsey lot. And, and the, the new measurement, the new extension of these lots to mean-low water is an extension that, that may not be supported by the, the, the chain of title to these lots. I mean, it certainly has not appeared previously in the description of the lots and, and the, and the assessor's maps relating to the lots. It's, it's a new feature. But, you know, that, that being said, the, the legislative body of the City of Gloucester has the authority to define what is and what is not countable as lot area, and they have done it. So, so ignoring that, that legislation, I think, is, is in excess of the authority of this board. You have to, I think you have to recognize the, the, the ordinance definition of lot area when you, when you calculate these lots. And you also have to recognize that the subdivision of these lots into two different lots, each requiring a variance, actually increases the non-conformity of these two lots and is something that is abhorrent to, to zoning as the law of zoning has developed in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing, rebuttal.
Thank you, let me just bring up my site plan. So right off the bat, I think we should remember the, the permitting history here. This was one 80,000 square foot lot, and I want to clarify something Attorney Handy just said, which is that these lots are not all necessarily non-conforming. This prohibition or this maximum of using wetland resource area to count towards your lot area is only about newly created lots. So if you have a pre-existing lots, you know, prior to anything being done here, it was 80,000 square feet, and all 80,000 counted, right? It was a quadruple the size for an R20 lot. We proposed to divide it into two 40,000 square foot lots via A and R. Prior to doing that, we came to this board to seek the relief necessary to do so, because obviously we would not have cut this lot and deleted the, you know, the, the pre-existing exemption from that definition by making two new lots without first having received relief from this board. So these two lots only exist because this board has previously granted the variances required to create these lots. And we are simply here seeking to renew those variances because no structures have been built on them within the, the two-year period of the grant. That being said, I also want to just share my screen briefly. So as far as the footprint goes, I think including, something's happened to this projector. It used to be so much clearer, I really do apologize. I'm just thinking Zoom enough. So including the garage, so this is the, the house next to 111. Including the garage, I think there's a footprint of around 2,500 square feet, and that may include the decks also. And so you can see, it's a little more squared off than 111 is next to it. But this is not some structure that is outrageously bigger than the neighboring properties to the degree that's factoring into your analysis tonight. These are not, you know, enormous homes that are unlike anything you see out on Winger Sheek Road. And although I will say that 111 and 103 are certainly smaller than a lot of the construction that's happened in the last 15 or 20 years out there, even here next to 111, you can see this is not, you know, a huge world of difference between the size of these two structures. And again, I can't predict the future, but I would be surprised if, you know, another decade goes by and neither 111 nor 103 don't join the rest of Winger Sheek in, in reaching the size that many others have. The second thing I'll point out to that, to that effect is, if I can get one more screen share, just to look at the neighborhood. So when we look at the neighborhood here, so the, the properties, I should have clicked on to them sooner. This is one and two. Again, the green is only highlighting, I was searching for 111 to make sure I was in the right area. So these are the two lots. And when you start looking to the right, you can see how small, you know, these parcels are. And so, yeah, the house, the houses that might go on 105 or 107 might be bigger. But again, as far as density, again, you know, you have houses like this that are bigger than what we're proposing nonetheless, despite being a much smaller, and I can keep scrolling this way. You can see how tight this gets, right? There's all these structures kind of packed in. And so, yeah, these will not be the two smallest houses on Winger Sheek. I don't think they'll be the two biggest houses either, but they are on some of the biggest lots out on Winger Sheek. And again, the only issue is, these lots were created pursuant to variances this board had granted previously for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit. We're seeking to renew that. And then to the degree that there's any concern about whether you can grant those variances, the variance from the maximum threshold for resource area in definition, section 3.1.8, would also achieve the same goal of taking what are essentially, and in actuality, 40,000 square foot lots in the R20 district and allowing one single-family home that'll have about 12 to 13% lot coverage constructed on each. And so the last piece of rebut is, again, going back to the hardship and the uniqueness. Again, my fellow attorney focused on Winger Sheek Road. I will admit, there are a lot of lots on Winger Sheek Road with similar topography. But the standard is not the street you're on. It's, is the topography and the soil conditions unique within the zoning district. If you peel back out and look at all of the R20 zone throughout Gloucester, up in Lanesville, East Gloucester, parts of West Gloucester, yes, this one road has this dune resource area covering several lots. But the R20 zoning district is not a dune zoning district. These are unique lots within the R20 zoning district, which encompasses every corner almost of, except for the downtown of the island and the mainland to the west. So that being said, I just once again submit that we've met the requirements. You've granted this relief previously. At the end of the day, all you're doing is granting the relief to allow two single-family structures be constructed on double-sized lots, which is, again, it's relief you've granted once before. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by the board?
I, can I just ask a little question? So can, can you speak further to the, we know from the SJC that we cannot grant variances for lot size. So can, can you speak a little bit further to why this, this doesn't fall onto those prior cases, which shows we can't grant variances for lot size?
Sure, so in those cases, you have lots that are physically, in reality, too small, right? There just isn't the actual land area there. So the first differentiation is that these do have the land area. Again, they have more than, than the 20, they have 40 each, right? So you're not in the same boat as, oh, it's the R10, and I've got 9,000 square feet. I'm almost there, can I please get a lot area variance? No, we are in a totally different boat where we have physically twice the requirement for the R20, again, 40 where 20 is required. And we're not asking to take a lot that is physically too small and put a structure on it. We're asking for a structure that, per a definition in section 3.1.8. Is that this building?
Are we legally required to leave?
Is that a...
We don't know what's...
That's, that's security, not fire, right? That's like someone opened an office door? Okay.
Oh, yeah, whatever. One hour. I should be able to continue.
Okay. So again, the, the first differentiation point is that physically is the land area there, right? The second is that, again, we, we talk about merger because that's usually where it comes up, right? You, we usually deal with this in a merger situation. This is not a merger situation where two lots, um, existed, new zoning came in and suddenly made them undersized, so they merged together. This was one lot, again, that is only two lots today because this board granted the variances necessary to chop it in half back in 2022 or 20, whenever, whenever we were here last. And so this is not, again, two historic small lots where zoning doubled the land area required, they had to merge, um, as a matter of law. This is, these are two lots that only exist because this board granted variances for their creation just, you know, a couple of years ago. So this is not a merger analysis. And again, that's why I've asked tonight, to be clear, if you have any concerns that if you grant this lot area and this lot area per dwelling unit variance, that it may not be sufficient or it may not hold up, I've asked for addition, just a variance from section 3.1.8, which is not dissimilar to other relief this board has given where we've seen, saw variances from footnotes or from other, um, written requirements. It wasn't necessarily, oh, I need a 10-foot side yard setback and I'm five feet into a five-foot variance. It's been variances from, um, footnotes, from definitions. We've done this before, both clients of mine and clients of others that I've seen over the past 14 years in front of this board. So again, if you're concerned about your ability to grant the exact same relief you granted a few years ago, then I would say bolster that relief if you're so inclined with a variance from the definition of, in 3.1.8 of lot area to allow for wetland resource area to be counted toward the calculation.
So what's our hardship? So the hardship for a variance from 3.1.8?
Mm-hmm. Is that based on the soil and topography, which is Dune.
Right.
That this lot would become unbuildable.
Yeah.
If you were to strictly enforce that provision, 3.1.8, and that topographical soil condition hardship is unique in that the majority, vast majority of the R20 zoning district throughout the city is not Dune. So we have a unique topographical.
If we didn't grant this, they could, could they move that house that's there?
Move which house? What, that's weird.
Well, there's an existing house on the, that's.
Yes, so, right, so that lot still ex, that, that house still exists.
On the Dune.
That's being demolished and replaced with these two houses.
Right.
I'm sorry, what was the question? I missed it then.
If this wasn't granted, does this whole 90 or 80,000 square feet become an unbuildable
So the, I think, yeah, I, I don't think you could, you can't put, um, hump it back together again, right? Because even if we deleted that lot line, we'd be creating a new 80,000 square foot lot, and so we could still only count 5,000 square feet of it toward the 20.
Or 10,000 square feet of it towards 20.
No, because 20, you can only count 25%. The goal is 20, 25% of 20 is 5,000. So you can only.
10,000?
No, no, of, of trying to hit your target, right? The target you have to hit is I have 20,000 square feet of lot area.
Okay.
And to hit that target, only 25% of that target can be made up of wetland resource area. So it's 5,000 no matter what. This could be 100,000 square feet and you can only count.
Oh, because all 80,000.
This is Dune, right? Yes. So, so you couldn't even put it back together and slide back into, oh, this was a pre-existing lot, so it's not subject to this restriction. You'd still be subject to this restriction and you'd still need, unless you, um, and then this is, you know, I find it kind of ironic, the original plan, I don't think it came, I don't think it went to the zoning board, I know it went to the council, it went to CONCON. The original plan was to take that existing house you saw in blue when it was one lot and to greatly expand. It was a very large house, but it got all the requisite permits and permissions from the city council and the conservation commission. Some neighbors sued over it, the neighbors lost, but at the end of the day, everyone was very upset about that very large house that was going to be built. And my client had this, you know, kind of moment of clarity where he was like, what's the purpose of kind of building out here if everybody, you know, is gonna hate you? And he's gonna look at this house forever and be like, I don't know how he did that, but I, I'm really upset about this. And so he decided to move on and in moving on, rather than building the very large single house that was fully permitted, uh, I think a building permit isn't even gonna issued at one point, it was just a question about getting the garage ramp dialed in. Instead of, instead of building that, he said, you know what? I know no one around here liked this and it's not for me anymore anyway, so I'll go, I'll split this lot and I'll build two houses that are, you know, in keeping with the rest of the, the houses that have been built out there in the last 15, 20 years. And so that is what he is doing now. Instead of the suggestion of, oh, well, you know, if, if you just went and built one house, that'd be okay. It sure wasn't okay when he tried to do it last time. I think this is very much a situation of no matter what he offers, there are going to be some people who really appreciate having an abandoned cottage nearby and are going to be disappointed that there's going to be a house in which people live and reside and make use of their private property. And that's just, you know, the reality of it. So again, this proposal is before you, is the culmination of listening to feedback and fighting off lawsuits from these neighbors and finally saying, okay, fine, you don't want the big house, I'm not going to the big house. And through this floodplain ordinance redesign, I'll also mention, every time they redesign this, these lots, these houses push further and further back from the ocean. So to the degree that anybody's concerned about this getting in the way of anybody's existing, you know, everything keeps getting pushed back. So the end result here is quite a ways reduced from what was initially fully permitted on this site. And again, this is repeat relief that this board granted previously. These lots would not exist if the board had not granted it previously. The renewal of this relief just allows the structures that were anticipated to be built in the locations that have been modified to comply with the floodplain ordinance.
Thank you. So I see, I see two 40,000 square foot lots with buildings being proposed on them that aren't asking for any variances for side or front or rear, not asking for a height exception, they're strictly asking because of the way the area you can count is counted, that this lot area and lot area per dwelling needs a variance for. And it's certainly merger deals with lots, plot, the plot of land, not what rules could change and make it something else. So when it meets all the, way above the minimums, I don't see an issue. I think this is an easy, um, permit to grant the variance for lot area and lot area per dwelling. I do, um, if my fellow board members think that an additional variance for allowing, um, the three, three, what was it, 3.1.8, um, I would go along with that, too.
Well, I'm, I, I, I agree. I mean, you have a house on the lot. I do remember the prior proposal that came in, um, for a single-family home out there on the Dunes with that big driveway entryway. Um, I, I see the hardship. I think it's, it's, on the one hand, the city council chose to make a definite definition of lot area that reduced the usable land because of wetland, you know, elements on the land. In this instance, you would take a lot and virtually make something like two acres an unbuildable piece of land, which had previously had a home on it. I think that is a hardship for the owner of that land. I'm, I'm not sure about the argument as to whether we can grant the variance for lot, lot size or when you actually physically have that much land on the ground, but it's not buildable land is really what this definition is saying. It's not usable for buildable land. But you already have a structure out there. It's not like it's a pristine piece of, of the waterfront. So I'm, I'm inclined to lean in the favor of finding a hardship because I don't, I don't think it's a just ending to say you have a lot that's not usable. So I, I think I'm agreeing with you, Joe.
Yeah, I, I think, Michael Nyman here, I think I want to own at some level, too, that we had a serious hand in the creation of these two lots, in the variances that we've, that we previously granted, um, that have now, that's not a reason all of itself, but I feel like, um, if we had denied that from the beginning, uh, they'd be a very different, uh, story. They'd probably be a very huge house out there that maybe he would have built and sold because he didn't want to live amongst a bunch of people that didn't want him to do it. Um, so I, I also, um, find the hardship, um, I find it incredible to think that in an 80,000 square foot lot, now it's two 40,000 square foot lots, that without some sort of relief, can't put a house back on that lot because of now where we've helped him go with the previous variances. I find that incredible, um, that, that would be posited, that a house literally couldn't be built, uh, on one or both of those lots or a single lot twice its size from now. So I, I, I would like to move forward with variance as well.
I would have to agree with you, Mike, and the rest of the board for those reasons stated. I mean, it's just too big of a lot to deny that you can't build a home on it.
On the petition of 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking variances for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit in order to construct a single-family home at 105 Winger Sheek Road, I would move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
Mr., Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is the board, um, willing to grant the third variance in section 3.1.8?
Well, I'll amend my motion. Is the variance from 3.1, definition of 3.1.8?
That'd be, that'd be the third variance, the belt and suspenders.
It would be limited to what's proposed, so it wouldn't like open the door.
On the, I will amend my motion. Hasn't been seconded. On the petition of 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking variances from 1.7, 3.1.8, and 3.2.1 for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit, I would move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded for three variances. Roll call.
Mr. Canavaro?
Yes, for all.
Mr. Nyman?
Uh, yes, for all three.
Ms. Schluckte?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Decision's favorable? We'll move on to our next petition of 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking same variances for lot area and lot area per dwelling unit, requirements to construct a single-family home at 107 Winger Sheek Road. This hearing is, public hearing is still open. Attorney Fava.
For the record, Joel Favaza, Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street. I would like to repeat and incorporate by reference the arguments I made in the prior public hearing for the prior petition. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open to public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? Being none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Being none, we'll close the public testimony. Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion, it's just same, on the same grounds. Uh, on the petition of 125 Winger Sheek LLC seeking variances for, uh, 1.7, 3.1.8, and 3.2.1 from lot area and lot area dwelling unit in order to construct a single-family home at 107 Winger Sheek Road, I move approval for the same gra, on the same grounds.
Second. Motion made and seconded for three variances. Roll call, vote.
Ms. Schluckte?
Yes.
Mr. Canavaro?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Good, our decisions. Appreciate drafts.
Thank you.
Okay, our last continued hearing before our one new hearing is the petition of Charles Allen seeking a special permit under 1.9, 2.4, 5 to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Special use permit, 1.8, 2.3.1 subsection 3 for a change of use from a single-family to a two-family dwelling with exterior changes. Invariance 1.7 and 3.2.1 from side yard setback requirements in order to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single-family home and replace it with a two-family home at 61 Woodward Ave. A reminder, we, we had begun hearing this and there were some questions and they were going, we received modified plans, um, in the past week, and that's what will be being presented.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, before we get started, can we talk just a little bit about the relief? I, I just don't think it's accurate, that's all. I don't think they need any variances.
Before we kick on that, Peter wanted to make a statement because he was not in attendance at the last meeting. Uh, let Peter have us.
Okay, go ahead. Yep.
Uh, yeah, I just, I'm up to pie, watched the Zoom meeting, so I just want to let, uh, state that for the record.
But we do have a call. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so I don't think they need any variances. Uh, all they're doing is extending an existing non-conformity in the smaller piece of the cottage on the left-hand side. Uh, no reason for a variance there. And then I'm not really sure about the exact relief because the, the main house to tearing down is within setbacks. I don't think they need any permission for that at all. But maybe because they're connecting back up to the, the existing non-conforming piece? They need a use because they're changing to a two-family with exterior changes. Um, I'm not sure they need a tear down and rebuild, um, special permit. They're taking a small piece, I think, off the back of that left-hand cottage. They don't need any permission to tear the rest of it off, I don't think. So I'm, I'm not trying to tell us what to do, I just want to make sure, there's no reason to give them relief that they don't need, that's all. I just want to make sure and clarify the relief that they need. I have no problem with the project at all.
All righty, go ahead, sir.
Hi, uh, my name is Lee Dearborn. I am a contractor with the Makers Guild Design Build Firm, and I represent Charlie Allen at 61 Woodward Avenue in Gloucester. And, uh, as mentioned, the project, uh, we are seeking a, uh, special permit for, to add on to an existing non-conforming structure on the north side of the property. Part of the building does sit in the setback and we intend to add on to that portion of the building. So if I could share my screen. Do I have to raise my hand?
Yeah, hold on one second.
Yeah, we'll click on.
Could I get your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Lee Dearborn.
Great. So Lee, are you tearing off any of that cottage on the left or are you just adding on to it?
Uh, just adding on to it.
Yeah, so I don't think he needs a tear down. I don't think he needs a tear. Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, there we go.
Raj Nida. Yeah.
Okay, have you guys seen my screen? Or is it? Okay. Getting some delay in the, when I change sheets. But as you can see, this is the existing main house and to the left is what is called the annex. Main house built in the late 1800s, the annex built in the early 1900s. This has been in the family for that amount of time. And it seems like we're having a little, little issue with the screen sharing, screen sharing here. But referring to the plans that you guys have in front of you, really, all we're proposing to do is tear down the main house that you can see and rebuild a new one, really in kind. We're not really deviating much from what is there. We're, we're sticking with the same kind of cottage style, the same aesthetic, because the owners who have been going there for generations wanted to keep with that style. So really, what we're proposing to do is, like I said, take down the main house, rebuild a new main house that's structurally sound, a new foundation, slightly larger footprint, really not much, much larger than what's there, recreate the covered porch at the front. We are going to connect the, the annex and the main house with a covered enclosed hallway. And I know that was part of the pushback from the last meeting is that we had two separate buildings, which was not allowed for a two-family. So we are connecting those with an enclosed hallway, which is in the plans. And sorry, my screen just isn't showing up. But in the plans, you, you're referencing that covered hallway. It's a very short covered hallway that connects the two and as I said, is enclosed. We are on an R20 lot. Minimum requirement is 20,000 square feet. This lot is 33,000 square feet, 10,000 per dwelling unit. So we're well within that requirement. And the proposed footprint is really no more than about, it's just under 2,000 square feet for a building footprint and that's for two units. So pretty, pretty modest footprint for two buildings. Total living area, we are just under 3,000 square feet for two units. The residents, the, the owners, Charlie Allen, his daughter, her husband, and their new child are looking to reside here and we seek the approval of the board.
So just clarifying.
Yes.
Is the new main house being torn down and rebuilt? No?
The, well, the old main house, yes. Yeah, because right now it sits on old piles that are really not structurally sound. The, the structure is two-by-four walls, two-by-six joists and floor joists. So it, if we wanted to rebuild this and try and restore it, we'd pretty much have to reinforce the entire structure. So it makes more sense for us to.
Yeah, we just want to clarify and make sure we give you the right relief.
Yeah, sure.
Can you stop scaring, stop sharing your screen, Lee, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, Michael, I think we do want to do all tear down and rebuild just to protect everything because.
That's fine, yep.
That little leftover piece that this, we determined it, or they determine is substandard when they get into it. No, I don't want to make them come back.
Sure, yeah, if they end up deciding to tear it down, sure, yep.
Okay.
And then a variance for the side yard setback or?
I think we'd be, special permit to alter and expand with demolish and alter and expand. I think that would be safer.
Special permit to demolish and.
Replace a preexisting.
As part of the, yeah, a special permit, a special permit to go from a two-family.
So two special permits.
And then as.
I don't think you then need a variance because we're already there.
Oh, it's covered under the alter and expand and the demolish.
Yep.
Yeah.
So two special permits. Okay, thank you. We're going to allow testimony. Anyone in the audience or online wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? None, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposal? Again, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go on to discussion or permit.
I just think it's a great project. Dad's keeping the house, daughter and husband and grandchild is moving into a section of the two-family house. I think it's a great project.
I'm fine with it myself, too. I think there's plenty of, I think there's plenty of space there and the house isn't disrepair and in need of, you know, updating and moving into the, for the next generations. So I, I think it's a fine project.
Hey, we're ready for a motion.
I can make it, go on.
Go ahead.
I, I am, oh no, go ahead, Michael.
Petition of Charles Allen seeking special permit 1.9 and 2.4.5 to demolish and replace a preexisting nonconforming structure and a special use permit 1.8, 2.3.1.3 for change of use from a single family to a two-family dwelling with exterior changes in order to demolish a preexisting nonconforming single family home and replace it with a two-family home at 61 Woodward Ave. I would, for the, all the reasons that we've stated and talked about, I would move approval of both special permits.
Second. Motion made and seconded for two special permits. Be a roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, on both.
Mr. Schlichty?
Yes, for both special permits.
Mr. Canavaro?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
I'm also voting yes. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists. You've heard our decision's favorable. We'll have to get a decision out to you. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Okay, our last hearing of the evening is the petition of Miriam Gambati and Robert Burley seeking variances from dimensional requirements, setbacks and lot coverage and a special permit to exceed the maximum building height for residential accessory buildings in order to construct a garage at 6 Flume Road. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Robert Bob Burley. I'm one of the trustees and residents at 6 Flume Road. The home that is, we're talking about here this evening was built in 1884 on the corner of both Field and Flume. Field being a private road. We're seeking to build a two-car garage on the Field roadside of the, of the dwelling. The current road is paved to be about 20 feet wide and the existing home is barely over one foot from the, from the official road and about 20 feet from the actual pavement of the road. We're seeking a variance for the 20-foot setback such that the garage will be about five feet from the actual road boundary, but 20 feet from the pavement of the road, which would put it in a similar position as the house is today. If we were to go the full 20-foot setback, the garage would be go so far back into our backyard and beside our neighbors that it would go beyond their side deck, which is actually only three feet from our border and it would kind of obstruct their view from, from their side deck. And because of that, they've actually provided us with a supporting letter that you should have in, in your package to support the variance. We also have another supporting letter from the neighbors across the street. We're also looking for a variance from lot coverage, which today is existing at 24.9 and would go to 28.6 with the addition of the garage. The house obviously was built long before any of these zoning restrictions existed and so, and now with a garage. And now we want to have the garage and we would be going over that lot minimum, that lot maximum. Lastly, we're looking for a special permit to erect the garage to 20 feet, which would be much lower than the existing home is today. We believe that the garage will enhance the home and property. It makes sense to be 20 feet from the paved road and about five feet from the border, so it would still be in line with where the home is today and it would provide a much more aesthetically pleasing result for our neighbors and their butters on the, on our field side. Your consideration of our request is much appreciated. And I believe my mother-in-law would also like to say a few words.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Gambati and I have lived at 6 Flume Road for 56 years, most of them with my husband, Ab. And Ab and I always wanted to put a garage in and at one point we were talking to a, an architect and somehow it never got off the ground. So it never came before your group before asking for it. The house was a summer chapel, as maybe you're aware, built in 1887, as my son-in-law said. And it is right truly on the, if the road were widened completely, we'd be just right on the line practically. It, I'm sure in 1887, 1884, Bob said that it is, was a dirt road and I don't think they ever anticipated that it was going to be a road that was going to have much traffic. But because across the street from us on Field Road, there are two apartment buildings, one with eight units up and down, the other one, a larger building, and I think it probably has about 15 or 16 units in it. They all have outdoor parking. And when there are guests or something going on, those lots are, were zoned business because they back up to Lexington Avenue. And when they have company or when there's something going on on the avenue, the road race, all the different events that go on in the avenue, there is a lot of parking on Field Road. So I'm saying too, for what it's worth, the public, for public good, it would get two of our guests off the road because our cars would be in the garage and they would park in the pavement in front of the garage. I'm 89 years old. I always wanted this garage. I am very active still and I drive very carefully and I want to have a place where I don't have to scrape ice and snow off my car. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions by the board at this time?
So there are, there are two sheds on Field Road.
Correct.
And those are off of your property?
Correct, they're actually in the road, so to speak.
Okay.
I believe those were permitted many years ago.
Okay, and the, I just have a question about the garage. So we have a garage floor plan that has a two-by-eight, like a.
It's basic.
Six.
It's basically a 22 by 22 square with a five-by-eight entry area on one side.
Okay, so that's different than the floor plan. Do I have the wrong floor plan? That's the window size?
That's the size of that window. That's the size of that door. Five foot.
Oh, five feet by eight feet. Okay, which matches the plan, five feet by eight feet. Okay, that was my thing. I was just making sure they're matching up. Sorry, I'm not the best at, thank you. So I, I just wanted to confirm about the sheds. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll allow public testimony. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? We did receive some letters in favor, supporting the project that were in the packet. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Have none? So anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You're in the hall, come forward. If you're online, raise your hand. Any opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions by the board? Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan. It's a pretty odd little situation over there that the road is technically 50 feet wide, but it's really only 20 feet. So I, I think it's going to fit, especially with the neighbor. It would be awful to make them put it back there and not give them a variance when they don't want to do that and the direct neighbor that would be most affected doesn't want them to do that, but is hoping that we'll give them a variance. So I think it warrants a hardship.
I agree. Ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move in favor of the petition of Miriam and Gambati and Robert Burley seeking variance pursuant to GZL 1.7 from dimensional requirements, setbacks and lot coverage, special permit, 3.16 to exceed maximum building height for residential accessory to construct a garage at 6 Flume Road. I don't see that it's more detrimental to the neighborhood and it's a good project.
Second.
To be clear, we're, we're variances from dimensional requirements, setbacks and lot coverage and special permit to exceed the height for an accessory dwelling up to 20 feet. Motion's made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Canavaro?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for the two variances and the special permit.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. We will draft a decision and get that out soon as possible and you'll be notified.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'll do, I'll do, I'll do Woodward, I guess. What do I do with that application? Why are you winning?
Okay, any members have any other business they'd like to bring before the board? No? So there's three weeks between meetings, so I don't, do we have packets or no?
No.
No, okay, so we'll have to get those.
Do we have one meeting in November?
Yes, November 14th and then December. And we have a lot of continueds and we also have a lot of new apps. So it could be busy the next two weeks. I mean, it's 8:15 and we got through all that, so.
So you tell me, rest up.
Yeah. Don't, don't overdo it there, old man. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavaro?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes. They are officially adjourned. Thank you all.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, you too, Mike.